All right, let's go ahead and call this meeting of the San Diego City Council of the Order. If we can all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
A pledge of allegiance to the life of the United States of America. A free republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, for which we are called.
Do we enroll call? We have all council members present this evening. Do we have any public comment? Hearing done. We'll move on to adopting the agenda. Do we have any modifications this evening?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We do have a late addition. This was published yesterday to have added item L two, resolution to consider approving updated park code of conduct policy in public facilities and events. It is within your packet.
Okay.
Motion to adopt the agenda with the changes.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilman Merrill and a second from Councilman Lundin. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That motion carries five zero. Moving on to approving the city council meeting minutes from February twentieth, as well as the committee of the whole meeting minutes from February twentieth.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion to approve from Councilman Lundin and a second from Councilman Merrill. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That motion carries five zero. For announcements, we've got the committee of the whole meeting coming up on Tuesday, March nineteenth at five P M. We've got the planning commission meeting coming up Tuesday, March nineteenth at six P M. And the city council meeting also on Tuesday, the nineteenth at seven P M. Do we have any council committee reports?
No, I have one. So at the last chamber of commerce meeting, Jim Godfrey gave the city of Cambridge presentation focused on the development of the city. The Northern Lights Express Railway is unfortunately looking like it might be moving forward. There's a ton of state and federal funding backing it. It would be a main stop for the passenger railway is planned to be in Cambridge. I personally don't think it's a great idea. There's, you know, a lot of good train systems throughout Europe and other countries, but I don't think it really fits with our dynamic here. So if you have any concerns about that, reach out to the mayor or the county or the state legislatures. Cambridge Chief of Police is resigning and Assistant Chief is being promoted. The city of Cambridge is looking into a Cambridge shores plan to create a beach park and housing development on Lake Fanny. Highway ninety-five construction will be bid in twenty twenty-five for construction in twenty twenty-six. Although they have known that this has needed to be done for many years, they're still planning to bond for the project. So kudos to our finance director, Mike, for having a long-term plan. So we generally don't have to bond for those types of things because it saves our taxpayers money. I wish more of a local, state, and federal leadership would realize how important the long-term planning approaches towards saving taxpayers' money. So I'm happy that we do that here.
All right, any other council committee reports?
I had a community education meeting. But a lot of budget talks are being discussed at the school district. And a few of the school district employees will be down or had gone down to the Capitol to lobby for some more money from a lot of the policy changes that the state level made and already made. And it will hit the bottom line at the school district level. So they're trying to get some money this time around to help pay for some of that and otherwise it'll be on to everybody else. So that's all I got.
All right, any other committee reports? We'll move on then to business item K one, the liquor license renewals.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, so we do have four applicants here for license renewals. We have three for on-sale and Sunday liquor, which is Junction Bowl and Whistle, Stop Bar and Grill, Rum River VFW, Post two seven three five, Winter Greens Golf and Grill. And then we also have an application for a brewer off-sale and taproom on sale Sunday license renewal for Thunder Brothers Brewery, Inc. All the applicants have submitted the required documentation. None of them have any delinquent city fees. They all have had passed their background checks and have not been cited for any state or local violations per the police chief. And staff is recommending approval for all of them. And we believe we have all the applicants here. If you have any questions for them, you can vote all these together in one. They are four separate resolutions or you could do them individually.
So I see that the incident counts are still impressively low at all these establishments. So I want to thank the community and all the owners and management of those places. I'd make a motion to approve all of the renewals tonight.
I'll second.
I have a motion from Councilman Merrill and a second from Councilman Heeman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That motion carries five zero. Moving on to K two, the resolution awarding the bid for the twenty twenty-four pavement management project.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. So we took the twenty twenty-four pavement management project out for bids. We opened bids on February twenty-seventh. We received two bids, one from Aztec and one from Knife River. Knife or Aztec was the apparent or the responsible low bidder. They were approximately ten percent above our original estimate. But considering the bids were, you know, balanced and competitive, we're recommending awarding. Just looks like inflation is continuing to build. So at this point, if we award tonight, we'd be able to move forward with our maintenance project this year.
Wasn't Aztec the one we had last, the last one out?
Yeah, they've had probably four of the last five.
And are you happy with their work?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Is there, I know we, we've kind of talked about this before. Is there any sort of negotiation room? Because I know a lot of these contractors bump up the price because it is a city thing and they just think they're going to get the, they're just going to get the bid. Is there any sort of way we can, I mean, negotiate? Because that's still forty thousand dollars over our estimate. I mean, would it be worth it pushing it off till next year and trying to get more done in next year? Or I guess I just see forty thousand dollars over your estimate, which, I mean, it's only ten percent, but that's still forty grand.
Well, I mean, for anything to come above your estimate is unusual, I think. I mean, usually you overestimate if anything, so.
That's why I worry that they're just inflating, inflating the prices because they know it's a city government thing. We're just going to approve it. And I, I don't like that about doing business with some companies. I mean, I'm not saying they're doing that in this case, but I just hate to spend forty thousand more than what you estimated.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, my number was granted in estimate, you know, based more or less on last year's numbers because it's the first round of bidding on seal coat type mill and overlay type projects that we've got going, you know, with my company so far. So we don't have the, this year's, you know, numbers yet. And I think it's just turning out that this is kind of what the going rate is going to be as, as any other city that's bidding this summer is probably going to be seeing just that increased price. With that said, I have evaluated what we do include in our pay items. And there is one item that we included to try and address a really wide open cracks that I felt the, the unit price was pretty high. So, so things like that, we can choose and not use that specific pay item and just do like a regular crack fill. And, and I actually have kind of already looked into that and I, I believe we'd be able to save five, six grand by just switching that type of work that, you know, would just be something that we'd be able to handle during construction to modify, you know, how we get it done. So, you know, the goal would be we can make those little tweaks and, and actually end up spending less than what this bid amount is. Because it is a unit price bid, it's not a lump sum bid. So, so through the construction process and our management of it, we're, we're hoping we'll be able to end up less than the forty grand over what our estimate originally was.
Would there be any benefit to pushing it off till next year and getting a bigger, maybe a better deal next year on it? Is there other road conditions that are too bad to go another year on those ones?
So, I mean, one of the reasons even our estimate was as high as it was, was we do have a few streets that are pretty bad. The surface is ravelled off. And so it's just going to be worse. And we're going to have to pothole, you know, patch them and all sorts of things to hold off to the following year on those. You know, the idea of the economy of scale of, you know, if we doubled up next year, yeah, maybe the unit price compared to everybody else on smaller projects might have got, might adjust. It also may add another ten percent of inflation on to us. So, you know, that's just a, something I wouldn't be able to predict on whether or not the actual prices go up more than the benefit of having a larger project.
Yeah, and that, and, and that is something that Jason and I have already discussed that we'll address in this budget cycle is whether or not we can look at these items and maybe start stacking two years together. Maybe do pavement manage, at least in some instances, do pavement management every other year so that the projects are a little bigger. The bids are a little more competitive, drum up a little more interest. You don't pay as much in mobilization costs. It's not, my suspicion is it's probably not going to work in every instance. We're going to have some roads that this just needs to be the year because of the condition of the road. But where we can group two years together, we're going to, we're going to look at that and try and pull that off. So.
I think, I think in the long run, it could cost us more money waiting on, on some of them. I mean, it's, it could end up costing us more than ten percent. It could cost us forty percent more if we hold off on them. Because it gets too far down the road, then it's, it's not, that's not saving them. That's redoing them completely. And then that's going to put a bigger burden on those residents on those streets.
You know, but like Mike had said, the mobilization costs, that's usually a pretty big one with these companies. And I saw this, you know, the contract is relatively small compared to most. So I mean, it's, I think businesses have a hard time starting a smaller project, you know, kind of give you the, I don't want to do it, but I will price. So I, I guess in this case, I'm, I'm going to vote against this one. I just don't see how they can be over ten percent and how we can justify it, but that's just my opinion.
I mean, I'm okay if, if you want to ask them, you know, if you want to do it this year, come down on the price. Otherwise, we're going to wait and we're going to rip bid it next year with everything that we plan on doing next year and seeing what, what we can do for a better price. You know, I mean, it's, you know, it may, it may backfire. But I mean, I think even if it does backfire a little bit, you're, you're going to save on the mobilization costs and stuff too. So I mean, I think you're, you're probably not going to end up spending more money. I don't know. I guess I, that could be, that could be talked into that line of thinking too. Unless they want to come down on the price. If they want the work this year, then, then maybe they can do a little better, but.
And, you know, through the competitive bidding process, we're not allowed to try and negotiate.
Okay.
Then we'd have to choose to award on what they, you know, bid through the competitive bidding process.
But why is that? I know I've heard that a lot, but why?
It's just. It's a state statute that's required on a project that's over a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to do a public bidding where it's, you know, nobody can see what anybody bids are. It's not a quote system. It's closed sealed bids. You open them. And then, you know, that's the way to keep it from having any kind of collusion or, you know.
And what?
We just say the low bidder, you know, is just somebody's buddy and then we like, you know, choose to renegotiate afterwards and change it. Well, then it really cancels out the purpose of the sealed bids and finding out what, you know, what the competitive bid of the market gave us.
What happens if we don't follow that state statute? I mean, it's costing taxpayers more and more money every year when you don't have the ability to negotiate. I, is there, I mean, what's the real penalty? It's just like, you know, we had the D N R conversation where if we go over on water, they won't really penalize us. It's just frowned upon. So what's, what's the state statute if you, if you don't follow that? What's the penalty?
That'd be an attorney question, but I would assume we'd lose more money than we would. Okay.
Well, for, for starters, that would definitely be a major audit finding. Personally, that would look terrible for me. Secondly, I don't know that, I don't know that we have any reasonable chance of doing better by not following statute. I think sealed, sealed closed bids is the best way to get the best price. When you have potentially ten contractors looking at a project and nobody knows what anybody else is going to bid. If they want the work, they know they have to put their best foot forward. That's the purpose of sealed bids. Yeah, and if it's, and if it's, if it were allowed to be negotiated after the fact, I would have, personally, if I was bidding on this project, I'd have no incentive to give my best. The incentive would be to make sure I'm good friends with Jason, make sure I'm good friends with the council, make sure I'm good friends with the finance director, so that even when I don't have the low bid, I can still go in and negotiate something. And long-term, long-run, that's not really going to benefit the taxpayers.
How much of a bid on an asphalt bid like this is based on the price of oil? Is it, is it based at all? I mean, if oil prices are way down, are bids coming in lower? I mean, do you, do you have any idea what the, is there a percentage maybe that?
Um, so, I mean, I guess vaguely, yeah. So like, you know, the actual mill and overlay part of the project, you know, the actual, when we're paying for tons of bituminous, that's directly tied with the, the oil pricing, you know, as it's moving. So, you know, that can change weekly or whatever. But, yeah, I mean, for the most part, it's kind of, we're paying something like double the actual price of oil for it to have been, you know, processed, delivered, and installed. You know, it's pretty common for most materials that we do any of our projects with is the labor to install and all that kind of doubles the price of the thing that the, you know, the material was. That's just a, you know, general rule of thumb. But, yeah, it does, it does follow what the, you know, the oil market is doing. But in our case, our mill and overlay portion of the project, you know, price-wise, I guess, is maybe half this project. But, you know, miles of street, it's, it's only a small portion of the project because we're doing the seal coats and the, and the chip seals and the fog seals on more length of street. So, you know, it's not like half of this price is oil price, you know. It's significantly smaller than that.
Twenty to ten percent?
Yeah, something more along those lines.
So thirty, if, if price of oil was down thirty gallons a barrel next year at the time of the bid, it, it may not make up that forty grand we're looking for?
Oh, no, no, it wasn't on this project, you know. Yeah, I mean, I, honestly, I feel these bids are perfectly fair. I, I am recommending we award this. And I would be concerned that even though we add it to our next year's project, we'll get the same unit prices and now we just paid more, you know, at best. And if, you know, also, unit prices have been trending up consistently, significantly over the last few years. And our estimates are just trying to keep up with where the market's going. It's not just, you know, these are high and, you know, my estimate was some perfect estimate for this coming year. It's just, they've been going up fast, you know, with inflation. And I, you know, I don't see anything that makes me feel like anything is out of whack, you know, with a fair market value right now.
We've seen that with the splash pad, how fast those prices were rising.
Right.
Month by month even.
Yep. But prices won't continue to rise if you don't pay them. The market always wins. If you say it's too expensive, eventually, if everybody says it's too expensive, the market's going to react. I mean, pavement, pavement is, management stuff is so overpriced as it is. Those guys make a killing at the top end. And it's, I, I guess I would rather put my foot down on this one.
I mean, Mike, you said that you guys had discussed that. I mean, where, where was the advantage in potentially waiting and combining the two years together? I mean, what, what did you feel like you might be able to save and?
On the, on the one hand, you have to be able to identify the projects that can wait, right? If, if we have roads that are in such a condition that you let, let it go so far that now a mill and overlay is no longer feasible, but it's now a full reconstruct, now you really have shot yourself in the foot. So we'd look forward in time on that and look at those future years, look through the Pacer ratings on all the different roads and see where that makes sense. But to the extent, when you combine the years and you make that project bigger, it becomes a little more enticing to any contractor. And to the extent that they have to bring equipment and crews up here if they're doing a larger project, there's a genuine cost benefit to them. I, on this, on this one, I, actually, I should, I should say this too. For, for the council's perspective, I talked to a lot of finance directors that are surprised that we bid everything in February. A lot of them don't even get around to even thinking about this until March, April, May, or June. We do this in February and I start hounding Jason at the end of November because we want to be the first. Because if we're the first, we have a good chance for a price. Once somebody's calendar starts to fill up, they aren't letting you into that calendar unless they can make, make a premium on it, right? They're not going to bump somebody else or burden themselves to get you into the calendar unless, unless it's worthwhile. This is why we want to be first. And throughout my career, whenever we bid in May or June, this would happen a lot in Granite Falls. Whenever you bid in May and June, you don't like the prices. You bid in February, you get better pricing. It's just how that works. So that is, and, and that unfortunately, unfortunately for Jason, that does put him on the spot. Because like he said, this is substantively his first estimate of the year. You know, if we're bidding this in May or June, Jason's already bid several projects. He's already gotten pricing from dozens of, of companies. He's got a good, good perspective on that and his estimate is probably going to be considerably more precise. But when it's the first project in a new year, it's tougher. It's, it's just tougher to get an estimate that's going to be close to what the actual bid is. But this, this has been the trend, that prices are going up for this kind of work. And I, and I don't recommend, I don't recommend foregoing maintenance.
How long in advance can you ask for a bid? I mean, could, could we, could we ask for a bid now for next year? Or is that where people will not bid out that far in advance?
Yeah, I think that's, that's too far out in advance. You know, we, we pick February because we're trying to pick that time where they are looking to fill their calendars for the summer.
And which roads is it again that, I don't think we have that on this document here, but?
Yeah, I guess specific roads off the top of my head, it's west of Whiskey, so Centennial and, is it Oakwood? What's the road over there? I don't have a map. Our seal coats. And then we're doing the mill and overlays on the roads that are north of Main Street, between Main Street and Heritage. You know, next to Whiskey there. Those have the surface spalling off that has that nasty looking surface that, that's why they need the mill and overlay. And then we're doing some more seal coats on fourths, two more roads over fifth, the Mattson parking lot there. And then we also are including doing the seal coat on the police station parking lot. That's the one that has the open cracks that we need to do a repair on because if we don't seal that off right now, that could go bad fast. And then we're actually, also included in this was the, the salt shed paved base inside the salt shed that's going to be going in and redoing the curb along that so that it has a, like a smooth driveway kind of entrance to it. So those costs are included in this as well.
Was that part of your estimate too?
In the end, yes.
Okay.
And that was not part of the estimate when we approved the salt shed?
Yeah, it was, right. So, so the salt shed, like dollar amount, like Matt had all of them added together, but he had used the estimate that I had had for the portion that would go with the salt shed. You know, something like, you know, twenty thousand of the number that is approved for the salt shed is in this number.
Okay, so it didn't get doubled up within?
No, no, it's just that this is where we would pay for that work to be done. It wasn't, you know, it was included in that. So that you have the proper budget for it. It's, although it was based on my estimate, I believe that portion of the bid is actually right on my estimate. So I think it did come out to about twenty thousand-ish of this bid is the salt shed work. So I believe that kept that on budget or under as it was trending.
Yeah, I mean, I hate to pay more than what, what we expect, but.
I think it's just, this is why we're here. We're supposed to provide basic infrastructure. Whether the cause, you know, if this was, you know, thirty percent higher or twenty percent higher than what it is, then you could probably have a talking point. But if you live on one of these streets and it doesn't get done and then they start asking questions about how it's forty thousand dollars higher, that might not fly for them. It may be worth spending extra money because they live on that street. They drive up and down it every day. This is a basic function of government. If our staff is recommending it, I'll vote for it. Has the other bids that this company, we've given these, this company been competitive?
Yeah, yeah. Every year we more or less at least get these two companies every time bidding our seal coat projects. And sometimes we get a third one. But yeah, they're consistently the lower bidder. That's the, you know.
Yeah, like I said, I know that, like you said, the last four, five projects, and I think everybody was very satisfied. Not just you as overseeing it, but I think generally it went pretty smoothly given the residents on those streets. You know, there again, if we don't do something with that police station parking lot, it's going to cost us more than forty thousand dollars to replace.
And actually, I guess, now that we're talking about the salt shed topic as well, you know, the fact that we were able to lump that in with this is able to take advantage of a shared mob, the mobilization topic. So if we were to not award this, we would have to go for a quote to only have that work done, which includes concrete work and paving work. So we'd end up having to have multiple moles of different subcontractors separately quote us pricing to just do that small little item. And it, that alone could burn ten grand more than we want to. So, so having it merged onto this is already kind of trying to do the, you know, the shared mobilization, you know, benefit.
How big is that pad in thickness? Is it a floating slab or do you know what it is?
Yeah, it's just a, Public Works is going to set the class five, you know, just to base it out. And then this is going to, it's going to be paved, bituminous paved inside of it. Because of the shape of the, the walls that are going to go in, they're kind of like a big wide base T. We actually have to end up paving six inches thick to get over the taper of it to give Public Works a big wide flat pavement surface. So it ends up being six inches thick inside of it. So, and we're needing to redo the curb along that so that it doesn't have the, you know, big, sharp curb jump when they're trying to load their salt in and out of there. So. And like I say, that part did come in as planned. You know, and maybe a portion of that is that the mob was able to be shared with the rest of it that increased or, you know, distributed into the rest of our project, but.
I like the conversation we had on this tonight. I'll, I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
I have a motion to approve the pavement management project for twenty twenty-four from Councilman Heeman and a second from Councilman Lundin. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign.
Aye.
That motion carries four to one.
I have a quick question. How do we get those bids? Is there any way to get more than two companies involved? I mean, Jason, you said sometimes there's a third, but you would think with these types of projects, we would have a whole lot more people interested. Is it one of those things like with the BMX arena where it's a hundred and eighty pages they have to read before they can bid? Or is it super simple for them to, I mean, I want to simplify this so we get more companies giving bids because then you ensure competition versus if you just have two all the time, those two could be working together and say, hey, we know you guys are often bidding. I think we're going to bid on this, so why don't we collude? And we're going to raise the price twenty percent. And that might be what we're seeing. So how do we get other companies in?
It's really challenging. The simplicity comes from doing either quotes or RFPs, which we don't have required documentation that we have to do that gets up to those seventy-five page documents plus. Because this is a bid project, there are so many things we're required to have in there. They pretty, I mean, I don't want to speak, Jason, be better on this one, but a lot of them have the same exact language in them. So even though that looks like it's a lot of documents, they're the same for every project. And a lot of those companies who bid on those are used to seeing those thick documents. Yeah, they should read them and I'm sure they do or they have a team that does that part of it. But they're looking for the scope of work, which is not as many pages. But that's all the legal jargon that we're required to for a bid project. This year, or this project specifically, was our first project that we did. And we did, do put it on our website, but we did push it out on our new public alert system. So for people who had subscribed to our projects and notices alerts, that bid did go out that we were, and a link to our website that had all the information on how to put a bid in. So we're, we're trying to get the word out more. Jason? Jason's company also has different websites that it gets pushed out on to. He's got the names of those, which are frequently visited by contractors who are used to bidding on these big projects. So we do try to get the word out.
So most of that and there is state statute then probably too, huh?
I mean, we can call like specific companies, say, hey, we have this project for bid if you're interested. But I think that those are the same project, or companies that are watching the project notices that they put out on those specific websites that people use all the time, right?
Right. So in Minnesota here, I mean, to be honest, there's only a handful of companies that are still in this seal coat business that, you know, are the right size to be able to make it cost effective to come hit streets. And it's such a fast process, they really, you know, if any, they really are down to just a handful of companies that can just fly around the state and they cover the, like, the whole Midwest. And these are two of about four. You know, we advertise it, you know, by statute, but, you know, in the local paper, on, you know, a trade magazine. Quest CDN is the online system now that basically gets it out to anybody that's capable of doing work, has that access and sees it and gets alerted. And so it's pretty much, we're getting it out to anybody in the Midwest that would be interested. I do follow up with these companies that have bid with us before to make sure they're aware of it. Every single time they already are, the moment the thing gets alerted, they have, you know, they're just notified that it's been posted. And so, I mean, you can, you know, go as many extra ways you want. We're already doing more than the minimum that's required. But there's just not that many out there that's, you know, really making it where you're going to end up with having like nine bidders on a seal coat project anymore.
Yes, I like the idea of trying to bundle as many of these projects together and get a bigger, bigger, one big project. You probably attract more companies. I like that aspect.
Yeah, I think that's something we could definitely dig into further, but. Okay, moving on to K three, resolution for municipal state aid funds advancement.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So if you recall, this is to request state aid funds to cover the railroad crossings. Last year, we passed this exact resolution requesting the advance, but we didn't get the bill for the crossing, the planking installation. If you recall, we signed those two contracts for each crossing location. We're paying eight hundred dollars a foot of that share, but they didn't give us a bill. So we weren't able to request the money from state aid. And the system for requesting an advance is only good for the year that the request was written. And so we got the bill here in January. And so now we got to pass it again so that we can get that whole project funded through state aid funds.
And that's something we already agreed upon doing.
All the same numbers and everything, it's just now we've actually had to pay it. So now we actually have to ask to get reimbursed essentially.
Motion to approve.
Can we send them a bill for staff time?
Well, technically, we're sending them the bill for engineering time.
Yeah, see, we're paying for it because they're slow with it. Come on, railroad.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
I have a motion to approve from Councilman Lundin and a second from Councilman Heman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That motion carries five zero. Moving on to K four, the ordinance amending chapter two sixty-two sewer and water service charges.
So at the February committee of the whole meeting, council discussed amending chapter two sixty-two to remove the disconnects and water shut offs that we would do. And then any delinquent bills would be assessed to the property taxes of the owner of that property who had the delinquent tax bill, or I'm sorry, utility bill. So any language changes here are marked and notated in red. This has been posted for the required ten days.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion to approve the changes from Councilman Lundin, or excuse me, Councilman Merrill, and a second from Councilman Heman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That motion carries five zero. Moving on to K five, ordinance amending chapter three twenty-five, water.
Mayor and council, this was also discussed at the February committee of the whole meeting. This was to allow private wells with city council authorization within the city of Isani. This is also, has notated changes in red and has been posted for the required ten days.
I think this is great, gives people a choice. So all motion to approve.
Yeah, I think it's good stuff, so.
I'll second.
All right, I have a motion to approve from Councilman Merrill and a second from Councilman Heman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That motion carries five zero. K six, the ordinance amending chapter four four five zoning code, section sixteen, signs.
Good evening, mayor and council. This was originally requested by the council to review section sixteen of the zoning ordinance and has been evaluated by the committee of the whole and the planning commission. All requested changes have been made and the updates have been posted for ten days. If approved by council, the changes will go into effect on March fourteenth.
All right, yeah, this is something we basically just cleaned up the language and the sign ordinance and relaxed some of the rules, which I'm a big fan of, so.
I would like to see us go a little further with it.
In what area?
Just limiting the amount of signs some of these businesses can have, like, I don't think we addressed like corner lots, businesses with corner lots. I know we did how many feet apart they can be. But temporary signage, I'm still a little, I still think that we should have had more leeway on that. I know Mr. Lundin mentioned that in the past, there was problems with people leaving signs all over the place. But nowadays, signs are expensive, people take time, they're not the old fashioned signs people put out with cardboard or a piece of plywood nowadays. You know, they put, they put money into their signs. So I don't think there would have been a problem with that, but that was my concern.
Just because it's in there doesn't mean it has to be enforced too, so.
Right.
That's, it gives us the opportunity to enforce if there is a problem, but there's so many things that's in every cities and states zoning and there are regulations that they don't really necessarily do.
Yeah, I still see Christmas, install Christmas light signs still up and there's store bought and signs that are made for that. I still see them set up today. I just seen them just the other day. Now, didn't I see any in other cities? So that did, people don't always pick them up, Councilman Heman. Trust me, they don't.
I've seen it. Garage sale signs are notorious for that. But, you know, businesses and advertising for businesses and events, I don't believe there's been that problem here in the city. And like Luke mentioned, you have to apply for your temporary sign permit for the hot rod event that you have. And that makes no sense because it's a one or two day event. You're not going to leave the sign behind and that mainly was the whole purpose of it. Some people might not know to come in and ask for forgiveness for the fees for that, but.
I was going to say, I thought we talked about that. Did we waive the fees on that or that was a separate section we had to look at?
For nonprofits.
Nonprofits.
Okay.
Um, we did change that section that they are not required for a day event, a one day event. Anything over a one day event, they would, but unless they have a special event permit, they're always allowed to get it approved through that.
But they would need to come in for the special event permit anyway, right?
Correct.
True.
Yeah, so I think we did kind of address that. And as far as the corner lot issue, I mean, we lowered the distance that they had to have between signs. So that should help the corner lot as well, that they would be allowed to have more signage.
How many feet was that?
I think it's, if I'm looking at the right, I mean, on free, every, every sign's kind of got a little something different. But I mean, the freestanding signs, it looks like we took it from, it was three hundred between each one and now it's only one fifty. So we cut that in half, so.
Same, got it.
Yeah, so the goal was, and everything that we were doing was to try to allow more flexibility. Same thing with the temporary black signs and everything like that too. I mean, all of that stuff that used to be, you know, you had to be grandfathered in and then you could only have it for thirty days and then you had to take a break. And then you could have it, you know, four thirty day periods, I think, throughout. So now you can just have it all the time if you want, so. So yeah, I think a lot of good changes there, but.
Yeah, we did make a lot of good changes, yes.
I'll make a motion to approve that one then.
I'll second.
I have a motion for myself to approve and a second from Councilman Merrill. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That motion carries five zero. Moving on to K seven, excuse me, K seven, resolution in opposition to redesigning the state flag and seal.
So mayor and council, this was discussed at the February committee of the whole meeting. And there was a draft presented there. This draft has remained the same as was presented that day. And staff is looking for direction if this is a resolution that the council desires to pass.
Did we ever, or did you guys have a chance to basically take that resolution and write it in a letter form to send to either state reps or governor or the flag commission or someone that'll actually maybe read something that we say as a city and take it to heart?
Staff did draft it and the mayor had reviewed it. It has not been sent out yet.
Okay.
I kind of want to wait until we approve this so that we can kind of say, well, here's what we actually did and not just what we were intending to do, so.
Sounds like the state might be moving a little bit on that.
On the flag issue?
Yeah, I thought, I seen something this morning about they might just put it out for votes, start changing the flag, so.
Right.
Hmm, well, you just leave it alone.
Yeah, and that's exactly what we need to keep doing is pushing back too.
We do.
You know, it's not, it doesn't go unheard, I don't think, if there's enough small communities that say, hey, this ain't right.
Yeah.
So we, I'm pretty firm that we need to stick behind that, so I'm happy you guys have it in mind already.
Yeah. Who do you, who do you want to send the letters to? Do you want the local representatives, like state and senate? Or senate and house and then the governor and Graham Cambridge and the county is kind of what you guys were talking about at the committee of the whole meeting?
And the flag commission. I think, I don't remember the exact name, but there was a commission for that flag, whatever, design team or whatever they called that.
And then you wanted me just to kind of work with staff to write that letter basically?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, we basically have them done. We just wanted to kind of wait till we've approved this, so.
I'd motion to approve.
Okay.
Second.
I have a motion to approve from Councilman Merrill and a second from, a second from Councilman Holmgren. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That motion carries five zero. K eight, resolution in opposition to the North Star Act.
This was also discussed at the February twentieth committee of the whole meeting. There is a resolution, this is formatted, but it, to our format, but it is the same as was presented at the committee meeting.
So I had a question on this one. How can we take a more aggressive stance on this? Who do we go to for this one? Would it be the same type of letter that we send out? Because obviously, our community doesn't want illegal immigrants taking over the state of Minnesota with no legal right for us to do anything about it. So how do we stand firm as a, as a city on this one?
My understanding is that if we have intent to share our thoughts on this and how we want to represent our citizens, excuse me, is to pass a resolution such as this and to send it on, it would be your legislature.
I think the answer to that question is, is if they were to actually pass it, which it sounds like they don't, but I mean, they're still, they're still making efforts. I saw an article from yesterday that the authors of it were still pushing it and trying to answer questions about it, but.
Should have never been admitted anywhere.
No, it shouldn't have.
Totally unconstitutional.
I think this is basically what we can do now. And then if something were to happen and then we actually have details, then, then maybe we can do something with the details that we could, could go around, you know what I mean? But without having something that's concrete, you know, ready to go or anything like that that we can combat against, there's really nothing for us to do at this point, other than say we, we don't believe that this should, is something that we want to have happen, so.
Encourage our neighbors all around us to do the same thing.
Mm-hmm.
Motion to approve.
And do you, well, real quick, do you want this letter sent to the, basically the same folks that we just talked about on the last one? As far as the letter portion of it?
I would say so and focus on the constitutional aspect of it.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't know how they can even fathom that up, that would ever get passed. Kind of a joke.
Mm-hmm. Okay, I have a motion from Councilman Lundin. Do I have a second?
Second.
And a second from Councilman Merrill. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That motion carries five zero. Moving on to K nine, illuminate Isani options.
Good evening. Staff worked to put together four options for illuminate Isani for 2024 as requested from council and taking into all your considerations. Option one would be the same event as in the past, so leaving that as the benchmark. Ticket prices would remain the same and the growth of the event is needed to continue to get similar attendance as the past two years. Option two would be to lower ticket prices, but costs remain the same as people paying for the event. Will expect the same event and attendance numbers will need to increase. Option three would be a free event to be held December first through the thirty-first. Each Friday and Saturdays would include volunteers, vendor trucks, vendor and food trucks with a wood fire pit. Santa would visit for the three Saturdays prior to Christmas. No fence would be installed, all items would be displayed in the park that we currently have. Lights set to timers from five to nine P M. No expansion or giveaways unless they were donated and items would be repaired or replaced as needed. Option four is a free event to be held December first through the thirty-first. Santa would be hosted one day during the event. Only the largest items would be displayed in the park, just to save staff time from setting up the smaller spaces, the smaller items. As well as no fence would be installed. Lights would be on timers from five to ten P M. Is that when the park closes and no volunteers would be needed. No expansion or giveaways unless donated and no replacement of items once in disrepair. And so Mike has put together the budgets that go inside with these, so he can explain them now.
Yeah, the first page I put together is the program revenues and expenditures by category. That's the basic history. How I put this together was not based on the budget years that were approved by council, but rather the actual year that transactions occurred, right? So if I follow through on 2022 total revenues, whatever the category, total revenues of forty-three thousand and change, total expenditures of one sixty-four and change. Twenty twenty-three, we follow this through 2024. We actually draw, you know, concisely draw a line to where we are today, which is about a hundred and forty-five thousand in the hole. Then based on the options that Stephanie gave me, I just did a real quick analysis. You know, option one is if we run the same event and we assume, you know, a rough average in revenues based on the past two years. Yep, we keep going in the hole. Option two, there, you know, options two, three, and four, you got to start making some assumptions. It's not quite as cut and dry as option one. You know, option two, I assume, you know, half price tickets. Double the average daily attendance. So at that point now, you're talking about seven hundred and eighty-two people per day. I assume grant revenue is roughly the same and the total donation sponsorship revenue is the same as what we've had in the past couple of years. And yeah, we go further in the hole on that one as well. Option three, when we get to the free event with Saturdays, it gets a little bit better. It's more of a sort of tread water kind of thing. And option four, free with just one day Santa. Assuming again that grant revenue stays the same, donation sponsorships stay the same. That's the, that's the option where we maybe have the best chance of climbing out of the hole. I would caution you guys is, I do not have a crystal ball. I'm giving this my best effort and the way I look at these is, you know, I consider those ending cash balances as on a spectrum of probability, right? And you should maybe think of it as if cash is, which direction is cash going and by what amount, right? Is the, is the, is the, is the slope steep or not, right? That, this is not gospel. Right, this is like when I present a budget, that is, the budget is literally the only thing that will not happen exactly, right? And this is the same deal here. But a lot of this is going to be, a lot of this is very subjective. It's going to be what, how does the council view the benefit of the event against the cost? And what do we think, what does council think is the likelihood for attendance by choosing one option or another? Very subjective, but that's council's task.
So the biggest question I had was, if we do make a free event and we don't put up the fencing, is any of that stuff insured through our insurance if there was vandalism? I don't know. I don't think we've talked about that, but that could be a big hit.
We have a blanket.
Okay, so that would cover.
For property, property and open, PIO it is called, so.
Do you know what the deductible is on that?
It's a thousand dollar deductible. So cover like if someone drove through and demolished a bunch. But if we had some small vandalism.
small vandalism to some of the light displays, I'm not sure if that would warrant a claim, so keep that in mind.
Yeah, when you have a thousand dollar deductible, you don't wanna necessarily submit a claim for everything.
Right.
Right, you gotta kinda weigh that out. Even if it's two thousand dollars of damage, probably not worth the hit to your rating.
Is there a big cost to putting the fencing up since we already own it? Or would that mean?
It's staff time is the cost, so it's just when we were looking at this, we were trying to reduce the staff, staff time, because that is the cost to the city, so, um, it does take a whole day, at least, for them to set up the fence.
Okay.
And then to take it down again, so.
So at the committee of the whole meeting, we kinda discussed looking for outside people that may wanna put this on, and I've always been, I mean, even from the very beginning of this, I, I voted against the way that it was done, because I thought we should have businesses, you know, we could provide the, the infrastructure for it, but have businesses come in and do their own lighting displays as advertisements and, and that type of thing, to where it wasn't something that we were doing as, as a city, uh, but more as, you know, just, we were basically giving them the, the space to do it, and the, the, uh, infrastructure to do it. But, uh, I mean, have we reached out to anybody in that time? I know it's only been a couple of weeks, but.
Yes, we have some interests, but nothing to share. So, I don't know, it could be a possibility, but I think it's.
I think for the right group, it could be a good fundraising opportunity, or, you know, something like that. I, I like option four, I guess, if we had to pick one of these today. I think option four makes the most sense in going to a free event. I just, last year, I mean, it made me sick just thinking about the amount of people that were paying that kinda money to come into something that was only really gonna keep them entertained for maybe forty-five minutes to an hour at the most, and, uh, I just didn't feel we, people were getting enough bang for their buck on that, but, um, I don't know, what do you guys think?
I would agree with that as well. I mean, I've said that since day one, too. It's just, I think if we were to make this a free event, we would actually get significantly more donations and people wanting to be involved, because the traffic numbers are so much higher. Um, so I think that's something that, I guess we can maybe be optimistic for. I think, um, option three might be the best one, because we're using everything we have. Granted, it takes a little more time to set it up, but then it's actually a destination for people to come to, and I think sponsorship and even donations, say if we have a donation, something set up at the, you know, at the park for donations, maybe that would help. But I, I don't think there's any way that I could go for anything where we continue to go in the hole a lot, like we have been the last two years. Even though, I mean, you hope that it's gonna pick up, but I, I really don't, don't think it's going to in, in the next few years, so.
How about the people from the VFW? I know you volunteered almost every year there. Do you have any input on this, what your feelings are? Any of ya?
Alright, well, I've been there the last two years, you guys have done it. And I had my staff come in. They loved it. Um, the people that were there told us really good things. Um, last year, we did the popcorn and the s'mores stick. They all loved it. I never heard one complaint the whole time we were there. Kids were running around laughing, smiling. It was great. It was great to see.
Do you think they'd love it more if it was free?
Um, I, yeah, of course. But, you know, Sam's Lights and those ones, you could pay twenty bucks a person to get into.
Right.
That's just that, then they can park it on top of it.
Yeah, but that one's crazy in comparison to ours.
Actually, I didn't think, I, I, it's great. I loved it. Last time I went there, twenty minutes, I had enough of it.
How long ago was that?
Last year.
Oh, I thought last year was great. That was like, that's like a three or four hour deal.
I was, I was, I had enough. I was enough.
It, it is neat, but, yeah, people loved it. You know, they were smiling. Kids were laughing and loving it.
Pay eight dollars for a small cup of hot chocolate.
At least.
Yeah, at least.
At a shot of Bailey's, it's fifteen.
Yeah, so I mean, Sam's Christmas Village is not a cheap venture, at all, by any means.
Is it run by their city?
Private.
Exactly, that's, let's go that route.
That isn't, I'm not gonna set up your schematic semantics. Everything I've heard of is always a great thing. The only complaint I ever had from it was the twelve-dollar fee, plus they had to pay tax on top of it. And I came in last year, and I said, let's drop the tax off, but just make it a flat twelve-dollar fee, so when they're paying twelve bucks, they're paying twelve bucks for the ticket.
That was a big complaint.
I've heard a lot of complaints about the twelve bucks in general. Costs fifty bucks to bring you and your family, and it's pretty, I mean, Jimmy said it himself, it's pretty disappointing. I, I think the whole, the whole connotation from the community is, we shouldn't have spent the government money, the taxpayers' money on this event, and then charged for it. Uh, from day one, that's just left a bad taste in people's mouths, so I think if there's a way to make it right, I think that's the better route, but.
Yeah, I mean, the approach we took last year was, okay, we, we spent, we said, okay, let's spend the money that we, we brought in basically from the previous year, and then, you know, whatever we got in donations, and we still went over that budget, and, you know, we're just, we're just going further in the hole. We haven't seen, you know, we've added more items, and we haven't seen any growth, you know, as far as profitability goes, and.
And then another thing was, a lot of people are wondering why it's only open for, you know, that smaller period. This allows us to be open for the actual holidays, which, I mean, for me, why would you have a Christmas event that doesn't go around Christmas, you know, it's over a week before Christmas? So, I think that's a huge benefit to making it a free event, is we don't have to staff it, and people can go whenever they want.
I think fifty percent of the reason it failed the way it was set up is because we weren't, we didn't keep it open enough. Yeah, I think if we would've kept it open enough and closer to the holidays, um, I think we would be, we'd have way better numbers than we have. And it seems like that situation is hard to, uh, to do, even if we wanted to do it.
Um, we're not even talking about just the storage of all of this stuff, besides, I mean, you gotta have somewhere to put it when you're not using it, which is, you know, something else that, that was a problem that never was considered when, when it was set up, so. And I guess, you, Luke, you suggested maybe option three, but I mean, I think option four, maybe a hybrid sort of, of option four with allowing businesses to come in and put up their own displays?
Yeah.
You know, I mean, I.
I mean, I don't think either the, any of these are exactly perfect.
Option three, what I don't like is that it still takes all the staff time, and you're still gonna spend an awful lot of money to set everything up, and I mean, I guess it's, I do like that it's got food vendors still on Fridays and, and Saturdays, it looks like, and I mean, it's, it, there is some things that are maybe better about it, but.
I think we should, I, I would personally rather see us try option three and see how the community responds to that. I think there's going to be people that'll make it, so it's, you know, people will feel like it's worthwhile, so they'll wanna advertise more. I mean, we've already put, you know, a bunch of time and money into it, and just to kinda dumb it down to not really having any value in one year, I think is a little bit.
Yeah, I mean, option four is definitely more of the extreme.
Yeah.
Measures, so.
And I think if we leave it for option three, and we have a good year, I think that will make it more appealing to somebody else potentially taking it over.
Yeah.
Can I offer a couple suggestions?
Yes.
Yeah.
First thing, that sledding hill, you guys got all those lights on there? If you could shut those off, because it is lit up pretty good in there, so it's not dark or whatever when you're walking through. Um, that's one thing people said, you know, how it was still so lit up because of all the lights on the sledding hill. And there's not enough signage for anything. People didn't really know, like, um, we're the s'mores kits. When we had the s'mores kits, nobody really knew, 'cause there was nothing that said s'mores kits. Or when you had the gingerbread houses, there was nothing that said that. So if there's more signage and the lights are off, I think it might be better, too.
Good suggestions.
Yeah.
Mike, if we went with option three or four, and let's say we had zero donations, what, what would, what's a guesstimate on costs?
Well, the expenses are probably pretty similar to what's listed. Um, I mean, if you go to options three or four, and you're, and the, and the hope is to, at least some point, climb out of the hole, I, I mean, you, you're basing that on, we're gonna have more foot traffic, right? And the foot traffic is either going to lead to donations directly from the attendees, or I end up with more sponsorship because of the foot traffic. That's, you know, and in theory, that certainly sounds correct. Um, how it would play out in practice?
I mean, look at the most successful light display in Minnesota. Where is it? Bentleyville. How much is it? Free.
You pay for parking. That was, you, you laughed. This was my idea to start with, and that was what I wanted, was it free to go in there and just pay to park.
Then why didn't you fight harder for that? There was, I mean, during council, nobody fought hard for anything free back then, so I don't know.
'Cause it got turned to a different direction, and you weren't there, so you wouldn't know. So I'm not even.
I wasn't the audience.
You weren't gonna, I'm not gonna go into semantics.
I'm just saying.
It's, it, that was my whole intentions of this whole thing.
So do we, are, any of these options have donation boxes at the entrances?
Yeah, that's something that we'll have to consider. Um, I asked, Mike and I did speak about this, and we are allowed to accept donations. Do we want them to go to volunteers if we're having volunteers at the event? I know some events split the proceeds for donations at the door. Um, we wouldn't be paying contractors at the event any longer, so we'd have to figure out what would it take to entice volunteers to be at the event, to volunteer their time. So, um, there's a few things to consider as far as donations go.
I personally think if an event is free, people would be more likely to volunteer to. I think it'd be, you know, fun for even us to go there one night and do stuff, or, you know? I, I feel like people will have more of a sense of community when it's free.
I would be more willing to do a council night where we all volunteer night, or, or time period.
So I think, can we work out like this, the, the specifics later, like the donation stuff and all that? We just need a general direction at this point, or do we need a?
I would like to get as, everything ironed out now, so that we can put the resolution together and start recruiting volunteers, recruiting sponsors. It's important to start now.
Okay.
And one thing that would be helpful, even though we don't have a resolution this evening prepared, if we could vote on which option, so then we do have, 'cause as Ms. Hilsai mentioned, we do have some other things that we need to put together, and we'll bring that back in a further resolution, but it really is dependent on which option. So to keep this moving forward, and to be able to put the rest of the, of the sponsorship and donation flyers and such together, we'll wanna do that sooner than later, to get that in front of businesses as quickly as possible.
Is there a way to do QR codes for donations and do it online?
Yes.
I think that's the best way to go.
Safest way?
Yeah, well, we, we're a young community, and everybody has a credit card. No, my wife never has cash, so.
We still have to collectively accept everything online through council, so, um, when Finance Director Buckner and I discuss this, it would be a collective donation acceptance at, from the event admission, or donations, goodwill donations at the event, after the event. So he's, everything has to be accepted by council still, through resolution.
Is there any liability shutting those lights off on the sledding hill on Friday, Saturday night of, during the event for the month of December?
We could look at different configurations of how to shut them off, so we could decide which lights we want on and which ones we want off, so it could be turning maybe the lights off that face the south, or leave the ones on to the east, so we can look at different lighting options.
If I remember correctly, wasn't there a time where we were getting complaints there wasn't enough lighting on there, and now we're kinda back the other direction? Okay?
Well, this is for the lighting event specifically. We have had lighting issues for the, um, Amp It Up concerts in the summertime on the playground area, so we did add a light that is not on during this event.
Okay. Well, I guess I would like to see option three, because it, I think it, I mean, I don't think we should make it totally a dumbed-down event next year, but making it free and hoping that somebody else sees all the value in it, and will wanna pick it up, like the Chamber, or whoever. I think that gives us the, the shortest time horizon for getting rid of it, if that's what we wanna do with it, personally.
Yeah, I mean, I'm okay with that, but I think we should, in, in addition to that, I still would like to, I don't wanna buy any more displays, so even if we get donations this year, we can potentially buy more displays next year, but I mean, I don't think we wanna, I, I think we should only be spending, and it looks like what, that's what option three is, is it's just, just the cost to put it on. It's not any additional displays, and I don't wanna store more stuff, or, or have more staff time to put things up, and it's just, I'm, I'm really with Jeff, is it's not, it's not a city job to do this kinda stuff, and, um, but, but, I mean, I'm, I'm okay with option three. I think that's a compromise sort of a little bit, and it, it doesn't totally eliminate all of the fun stuff from the event, but it, and it keeps it going with, with, uh, no cost to the residents, and, and I think you still can bring in donations and, and that kinda stuff, too, but.
So if someone wanted to sponsor a light display, could they go out on their own to do that?
But I was gonna say, yeah, I mean, I think we could allow businesses, if they wanna, I would, I would like to at least start working in that direction, that if they'd like to, to, you know, put up a display and add to it that way, that a business could put up a display.
They would give it to public works, you mean, to put up?
No, I want the business to put, I, I don't want our people to have to mess around with it. If they wanna, if they wanna buy something that they wanna put in, or they wanna put up, I mean, in Williston, uh, North Dakota, which is where I'm kinda basing some of these ideas off of, I mean, that's their entire light show is, it's just advertisements for businesses, and it, it looks good, you know? It's, they do a good job on it, and it's something that they have fun with, and that, it brings more community involvement, and so, I think I'd like to see us, you know, we, we go, we go option three, but also open it up, that if there are other people that would like to put up displays to advertise their businesses, or, or their charity, or their nonprofit, or whatever it might be, that, that maybe they would be able to do that. So then, we kind of add to it that way, but we don't personally add to it.
So in light of that comment, um, just considering this past year, we had D W and Minnesota Equipment have their equipment in the park, would we allow that next year? Is that a allowable?
Yeah, things like that, I think would be fine.
As long as they know that there's gonna be no fence. That'll be the big change for them this year.
That's a good point.
So, as long as they know that there's no secure fence around that thing.
Unless D W maybe wants to put up the fence, huh? Put some other signs on it. Hey, hey, sponsorship, baby. That's, that's how you run the event.
Absolutely.
Hint, hint.
You can always run it by, by the company. How about Jimmy's pizza display?
Yeah, how about it?
Well, I mean, we got.
Hey, you store it, though, you store it.
We got some, some folks in the audience that might wanna put up some displays or something like that, so.
But they would store it from here on out. Is, is that, if they, if, if someone were to buy a display, we're not.
Yeah, I don't, uh, yeah, I'm not saying they buy it for us. I'm saying they, if they wanna put up their own display, I mean, I mean, and some of those ones in Williston were just, you know, just normal lights that somebody had put on, and they just were creative with it. I mean, it wasn't anything fancy, but, um, and I just, I don't know, I just think it's, if, I'm okay with option three as far as we're concerned, but I just would like to start getting more community involvement, so that we can kinda work in that direction.
You know, look at all the floats and stuff that are in the, the Chamber of Commerce parade. I mean, there's so many people, or the shopping cart, you know, some of those people might wanna come and, you know, there, there might be a time where we have too many people that wanna be involved with it if we're gonna open it up like that, so I think that'll be really cool.
Got the snowflake parade up in Cambridge.
Right.
They had all those floats.
And if it's gonna be a free event, too, I mean, you're gonna get a lot of, like Mike said, I mean, you're gonna have a lot of people that are coming in and, and doing things, too, so.
I think that's should've, how it should've started to begin with.
Yeah, right.
But, we tried it, and we gave it a go, and it's time for a change. So I'll make a motion for option three with those additions or changes kinda that we talked about.
Okay.
Does that include, um, putting some of those outlets underground?
Yes, that's included within the budget.
No matter what?
Yes, we put that in every option, because it has to.
And that was part dedication funds we're gonna use for that.
And we can, is, if that's the direction of council.
Okay. So why do we have to move them?
Just put them underground.
Yeah, what's, what's wrong with where they are?
There.
Are they just harder to roll around? What's that?
Cord's laying on the ground.
No, it's, we have the pedestals within the middle of the park that are sticking up, um, that's a.
Tripping hazard?
Complaint we're getting from the event, yes.
I, I view it as a tripping hazard. That's just one lawsuit away from.
Okay.
Alright, so I have a motion from, for option three from Councilman Merrill. Do I have a second?
Could we, um, make it clear that it's part dedication dollars within that, for that, for the removing of the pedestals underground, that I'll come back to, but.
Yeah.
Okay. I think that's in option three, is that it's part dedication dollars, but.
It says potentially, so, just to be clear.
So we'll do, uh, so, so your motion is for option three with part dedication funds for the electrical work?
Yep, and sponsors can still bring in displays, but we're not storing them anymore.
Okay. Do I have a second on that? I'll second it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign?
Aye.
I'm staying, I'm, I've had it with this thing. It's, I'm not even getting in the conversation, so.
Well, so what are you voting on?
I'll vote for yes then. That's, that's just, whatever.
Alright, well, I didn't hear a George vote either, so.
He voted aye. He voted aye.
Did you, on the?
Or for it.
Option three.
For option three?
Yes.
You voted for it? Okay, so let's try that again, so. So I have the same motion from Councilman Merrill and a second from, uh, myself. All in favor of option three with, uh, the, uh, notes that Lu- Luke had made, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign?
Aye.
So that motion carries four to one. Uh, moving on to the consent agenda, anything that you guys would like to ask about on that, or?
Motion to approve.
Alright, I have a motion to approve from Councilman Lundin, do I have a second?
Can I get an explanation on L two, since it was added late? I'm not really sure exactly what it is.
Yeah, so the city of Isani has always had a, well, not always, since, uh, twenty fifteen?
Twenty fourteen.
Uh, twenty fourteen, uh, we have had a part code of conduct in public facilities policy, which is for, um, actually, it was initially established, um, when we had some organizations in the community center that were being very disrespectful to staff and other groups. So that's why it was in, originally, um, brought forth through council. We took a look at that policy and thought that it would be good, uh, to add events to it and vendors. So to ensure that when we do have vendors, whether it's at any city function like the street dance, um, illuminate Isani, that if we are getting complaints about vendors, we don't really have any kind of mechanism to say, you know, we're not gonna have you back at our events because we're getting complaints that you were rude or disrespectful. So that's why we altered this and we added it to this agenda because the vendor forms for our events are going out this week.
I'll second the motion to approve.
Alright.
Consent agenda.
And so I have a motion from Councilman Lundin and a second from Councilman Merrill, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? That motion carries five zero.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion to adjourn from Councilman Lundin and a second from Councilman Heeman, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? That motion carries five zero, we are adjourned.